Welcome to the Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am declaring the meeting open at six oh three P M. Everyone who is able, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda to approve the warrants for tonight. We have warrant twenty-five, twenty-three for payables. P R twenty-five, twenty-two payroll withholdings, twenty-five, twenty-two. What would the board like to do with those?
Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes, I have.
I'll make a motion that we approved. The warrants W R twenty-five, twenty-three payables. P R twenty-five, twenty-two payroll. Withholding twenty-five dash twenty-two withholdings. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public session. Anybody for public session tonight? Susan?
Susan Turnbull, ten eighty-nine New Branch Tree Road. Who was doing Memorial Day? I have to get with them to do the prizes.
Memorial Day is usually handled by the Parks and Rec Committee, and as far as I know, two of the people are not available for that night, and I have not heard from any of the others.
So what's happening with Memorial Day?
And therefore, we have no information.
Only two weeks away.
We have not had people, you know, even sign up for the Parks and Rec Department.
Well, doesn't that look shabby?
I feel that it is very sad, especially with the students writing their essays. I think that's really a necessary item for the town, and unfortunately.
Just collected thirty-four hundred dollars for prizes. Great.
Exactly. I know. I know.
No, no.
I was trying to think the other night of another way we could at least present them with their essays. If not even at the Board of Selectmen meeting, because it is on Zoom, it will get to everybody and have them come here and do it. The meeting before Memorial Day.
Yeah, but what about the memorial part of the day?
I know. I don't, truthfully, I don't even know if they've gotten the buses to put flags out on the cemeteries. That's usually the Boy Scouts.
Right, but all coordinated by Parks and Rec typically.
We just evidently don't have enough members of Parks and Rec to put something like that on.
Who's on Parks and Recs right now? Anybody?
We, we've heard from two people from Parks and Rec, and neither one of them are available for Memorial Day.
I think it's a remain in three individuals, and two, from what I was told, will not be in town, and none of them are available, honestly. So they have seeked to see if, you know, if someone can help, but.
Don't make eye contact with me.
No, no, no. I'm trying to not feel, I don't know. Because I, I, I do think it's an important part of the, the town, you know, the celebration, what it means. So it's kind of sad and unfortunate. It's not gonna happen. Memorial Day does not require really any financial burden. It's just coordination, getting it together, planning. Normally, when I was on Parks and Rec, I had myself and anybody of the other members would have been involved in this months ago, making sure that the school bus company, who normally always donates, can still donate their two buses, and they pay for their drivers to come in. You know, coordinate with Steve LeBarre or anybody else involved in the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, so they can do the flag. Uh, changing on out at the five cemeteries with Mary at the school for the essay project, with the library for that portion, finding someone to be the M C and the guest speaker and opening and closing, you know, um, yeah. So again, it's just a lot of.
It's a lot of communication and bringing a lot together. That's why Parks and Rec usually has asks for at least ten members, and this year, we did not have ten members sign up for Parks and Rec. Though unfortunately, I don't see that it's going to be happening at the scale that it has been. At least it's not our year for the band.
And then there's.
I think that would make it. Yeah. Even compounded that we can't do it or.
And we do invite, well, Parks and Rec would invite the, um, any of, it used to be Little League, as that's got, gotten smaller, then we we expanded it to more like any, any child, really, whether you play a sport, if you play a sport for Quabin where you're, whether it's football or baseball, wear your jersey supporting Quabin, if not, just wear patriotic colors. Unfortunately, it has dwindled. So definitely need some new, young, fresh blood, you know, I mean, doesn't have to be young, anyone really, but just anybody who wants a.
This is being recorded right now. I mean, everybody will be able to see that and know that we need somebody.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't know how many years ago it was, but, um, the, uh, town canceled the Memorial Day uh, celebration because it was raining or misting.
I remember.
And the, um, Boy Scouts decided to do it anyway. Um, I would be more than happy to organize the flags without the buses, um, and get the scouts to do the, the flags at the cemeteries like we have done in the past, uh, and to do a ceremony at the, um, uh, the common. But I, I think that's a shame that the town would not do it, and so I know I could organize or get people to help do that.
There's not much time left to see what we can.
I mean, I will touch base again and let the Carbon Committee know, and if they want to coordinate with anybody, you know, absolutely, anybody, yeah.
Aaron, we'll have the committee get in touch with you.
Okay, great.
Okay, might be able to work something out. That would be fine. That would be excellent if they could. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for public session? Everybody's quiet tonight. Okay, very good. Highway Superintendent Review. We have Patrick Marterosian. It's already been six months, and this is his six-month review before the Board of Selectmen and the town members. Congratulations on your six months, and how do you feel it's going for you?
Thank you. Uh, it's going good. We had a pretty interesting winter, I guess, to start. Having started in November, I kind of was thrown into the mix of things pretty, uh, late, in my opinion, but we were able to manage. You know, we did go over on our salts, but that was kind to be kind of, uh, to be expected just due to the winter that we had with the amount of ice and rain. Um, we did go all winter without any incident, though. Um, I was actually very happy with, um, our employees, you know, there was no accidents involving any town vehicles or any other people. We didn't have any incidents, um, involving, um, angry residents or anything like that, so I was happy to hear that. We, uh, I do have a full breakdown of all the storms and everything that we've had. I believe I may have sent it to you in the past, um, but that went well, um, and during the downtime, everything went pretty well. Um, just to name some things off of what I've done so far, uh, we went ahead, cleaned up the garage, um, for you guys', for your vote and help. I was able to dispose of all those, um, junk tires and the trash at the garage. We were able to pick up all that. Um, we were able to clear out some new spot, new spots for our equipment that unfortunately isn't being able to be stored in the garage, so, um, just trying to do preventative maintenance with mice and limbs falling on them and everything else. Um, so basically, we were able to pull everything out of the woods, assess everything, what we have, what can be used, what can't be used. Um, we also did the inside of the garage, uh, needed a good deep thorough cleaning, everything gone through, what we're gonna use, what we're not gonna use. Um, there was an unpainted wall in the garage. It bothered me to no end, so I, we went ahead and we painted it. Um, and actually cleaned up the garage very nicely. This was all within rain days or colder days, and stuff that we couldn't get, you know, other things done outside. Also went ahead and had the garage doors, the man doors painted, not the actual big doors, but the, just the man doors painted. We got those painted. Now, I was fortunate enough to have, um, Industrial Design Works actually come out and put a label on the doors, so now people actually know what side is highway and what side is fire. We're actually kind of labeled now. There is a sign saying that there's a main entrance behind the building because we keep the front door locked, because, well, we never use it. So, um, so can kind of lead some people in directions there, which is nice. Other than that, we, you know, we've had a successful six months, in my opinion. Um, unfortunately, we had an employee leave. But we were able to come back and hire somebody and fill that position, uh, who was able to accomplish getting a C D L, already has his hydraulic licenses, and it's actually working out really well. We've been, uh, tomorrow will be, should be, fingers crossed, hopefully the last day of sweeping. We've been trying to jump around town since this past storm that we received, that microburst may, we could call it. And trying to cleaning things up and everything else, corners, intersections, and everything else where we couldn't get before, uh, but I believe we just have old turnpike left. And then sweeping will be done. Uh, most of the storm damage has been cleaned up throughout the year, what came down during the winter time, what came down in that last storm. You know, we have gotten a significant amount of rain, um, and there is a significant amount of drainage issues that need to be, um, addressed some sooner than later. Certain roads are being washed out and undermined, um, people's properties are being washed out and undermined. Um, this seems to be a continuous issue where back in the olden days, they would put a basin in and put a pipe to it, and then they would just pop it out on somebody's property. I don't know if they didn't do easements or something back then. I'm not really too sure, but now that we've been getting a significant amount of water we've been having, now it's, people are cleaning up their yards, it's flooding their yards and stuff like that. Um, it's on town property, but where the water is dumping out is not on town property, so those are issues we're definitely gonna have to address, uh, sooner than later, uh, before it becomes any more of an issue. Again, throughout the winter, I did an open salt meeting. Um, I really wanted to bring everybody, um, together within the town, residents, officials, whoever I could get their attention to, uh, properly address the uses of salt and sand. In my opinion, I feel that with the town using sand, um, it can be a resource in some predicaments, but I feel that we're wasting more money using as much sand as we were versus if we use straight salt, that would be at a less few or smaller rate. Which, you know, was all explained in the meeting, and, uh, it actually turned out really great. There was a lot of people, I was actually, um, you know, very happy that, uh, Mike from, Bay State Roads to the U Mass Amherst Program was able to come out and donate his time to the town, so that was great. We also, I've been pushing really hard to, um, again, with the salt and sand, I put in for an article for new sander controls for two of our trucks that wouldn't be able to minimize the amount of salt we'd be using, which would be a huge accommodation to the department as well, as well as temperature control system, so we know what temperature the road is. We know when to treat, how much we should treat, um, and, you know, it all goes under the same factors. My, my biggest thing is, you know, saving town, saving the town money and also helping the environment, that, you know, those are the two biggest things for me. Also with that, uh, I've looked into, you know, trying to find money for the department. That's the biggest thing, uh, whether it's Chapter Ninety, trying to get more money out of them, um, whether it's Fair Share Program, Roar Roads, um, and just grants in general. There is quite a few that are out there right now that I have been looking into to do my best to try to apply to our town to make it to where it'll be feasible in their eyes to where, you know, they will accept it and we can move forward. You know, we, I have a, uh, the Bridge Grant coming up in December. That'll definitely be something I'll be applying for. Robinson Road Bridge, um, may or may not pass inspection this year, so that may or may not be a road we may be closing. So, um, that is just something to keep in mind. Um, it is deteriorated a lot, especially with the water being higher this time of year. The concrete is just, it's taken a toll, so as well as the asphalt on top of the bridge. With that said, we also have the Safe Ways to School program and grant that I've been looking into, whether or not, you know, if the road that goes through the, you know, Chem Center School is actually a town-owned road, or if it's just a public way. Either or, they're still looking into whether I can apply for it or not, if it's not a town-owned road. But we, you know, that would also be something that needs to be addressed. They're having some significant drainage issues over there right now. Unfortunately, a lot of the drainage that's in the parking lot has failed. Um, it's all twelve-inch, um, corrugated steel pipe, and it's just rotting. Um, I think, but I believe when they did some renovations and put some electrical in, they went through those drainage pipes, and they weren't properly fixed when it was done. So now they're having reoccurring sinkholes in their parking lot, uh, which is going to be a problem. So we've been doing our best to patch it and move forward with it until we can get a permanent solution. The biggest thing this year, or for this six months, I should say, is I've worked really hard on trying to get us a new piece of equipment for the Highway Department. Our roadside mower was the biggest thing that, um, needed attention, needed to be looked at and possibly fixed or replaced. And I went ahead and was able to have approved to purchase a new machine, which we have received. I'm still just waiting on the paperwork so we can get a registered, insured, and then also weathered, uh, but we've had plenty of time to exercise with the machine, learn the machine, know how it's gonna work, what the limitations are gonna be. The guys are really excited to get out there and start using it. It'll give us more of a, an option, not just for mowing, but for ditch cleaning for a lot of our catch basins, uh, drop inlets and drainage ways, uh, but it also came with a loader, so now it gives us access to, in case something does happen to our loader that we have now, which is a two thousand and six. If it does go down, which we did have issues with last year, um, then we have something to fill in with, um, which is a huge, huge thing. Also, just been going over, looking into quotes on roads that want, that I want to get redone, possibly, um, be paved, reclaimed, graded and such. You know, some of them are main roads, some of them aren't. Um, I do want to express to the town as much as possible that even though there's a road that's not a main road, that maybe people don't travel so often in, we still have to maintain it. So when we have roads that are like East Hill or Stone Road, Rutherford, these roads that may have dead ends or just cut-throughs, there may not be a lot of traffic, but we still have to maintain it. So when we're going out there, we're plowing six inches of snow, and the truck's bouncing all over the place and sending us off the road, then that becomes a safety concern for us to where we need to address that road. So that'll be a big thing I'm gonna be pushing on. Um, you know, some people may not see the difference with us paving those roads, but, you know, they're gonna have to be done at some point. Again, focusing on trying to find money for the Highway Department. We all know, you know, the town's in a predicament where, you know, the money's just not there, so I'm, I'm gonna keep doing my best to provide for the Highway Department. Um, my plans for moving forward with the Highway Department, my goals essentially. A happy workplace is a safe workplace, in my opinion. So if my employees are happy and I'm happy, then I really have nothing to worry about. A clean workplace, a happy workplace, as, as long as they're happy, then things get done. Then that's what I want to continue to do. If they need something, then I know they can come to me, they're comfortable coming to me. Uh, we have a really good relationship to where if, you know, they need something, they can talk to me about it, and I'm gonna push to try to get it, especially when it comes to safety equipment or equipment that they find viable that's going to benefit the town. You know, obviously providing the, uh, the town of Old Cam, um, you know, covered three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, twenty-four seven. We're always around, no matter if it's holiday, whether it's winter, whether it's anything, we're always around. You know, we're gonna continue doing our best. There is only three of us, but, you know, we, we kind of have our, we don't have a set schedule, but we do have this routine where, um, you know, we kind of just ask each other, you know, who's around this weekend, who can take calls if something happens, something comes in. Even like today, it was a perfectly sunny day, but we had a tree come down. It was just, anything can happen. So, um, other options and goals I'm looking into, going back to salt, is a salt barn replacement. Um, our salt barn is from the late seventies, mid eighties, somewhere in there. I have some plans, but they're ineligible to read because they were just stored in the wrong place. So, um, that's a big thing for assault concerns, especially if people have concerns with contamination. If it's not properly stored, if the salt's continuing to get wet, it's running out of the barn. Those are things we need to look into. Um, it is a big expense, but the state has grants and funding out there to look into and help provide in the town to do. And obviously keeping the roads maintained to the highest standard, you know, happy drivers and happy residents are what I want to see. So if someone sees potholes or anything, then, you know, I want to make sure they get built, we're not having issues, um, drainage, trees, anything like that. I mean, any, anything on the roads is my concern, especially painting lines. Um, I do, I still have some money this year. I've been trying to coordinate with, uh, with some guideline. I believe it's Pory or Guidelines who paints the lines, seeing if I can get them to come in here and at least do maybe half the town, or at least the two main roads, um, just to so we have a baseline of, you know, keeping safety. The biggest concern as I have is if the lines aren't painted, there's an accident, and they go back on the town saying, well, there wasn't any lines, I didn't know where the road was, then, you know, it could fall back on the town. Um, I'm not saying that may happen, but, you know, we, we want to cover our bases as much as possible. Couple other things, uh, is I want to do an open house for the Highway Department. I'd like to keep it separate from the fire and police if possible. I think that would draw a little more attention to the Highway Department. I'd like to pull the equipment out of the garage. I'd like to get the residents up to the highway garage, and I want to show them what equipment we have, what we're working with. Um, so if there's a chance ever later down the road, and I have to go to a town meeting and explain to the residents that, you know, we have a truck that's broken down, and we don't have the money to fix it, this is why, and this is what that truck is, and what it looks like, and how it performs, and what we use it for. I think that would really open up a lot of the resident's eyes of what we have and what we're working with, um, and also the garage, you know, how big the garage is, and, you know, what lights work, what lights don't work, fire protection, all these things that, um, I really think that would be a benefit for us as a Highway Department, but also benefit for the residents, knowing that what's being able to keep, help maintain the roads. Another thing, looking in for a better system for the residents to file complaints, not specifically against employees, but complaints against the town. I'm trying to work with another town at the moment of how they're doing it. Um, they use an app, which, um, anybody can download on a smartphone, and it's just a portal where there'll be complaints can be directly sent to my, uh, email or the town email, whatever, maybe. I think there's something like that on the town website right now, but this may be a little more accessible for residents, maybe who, um, you know, may find it easier, maybe. But they can, instead of leaving me a voicemail on my phone, um, I'm not in the office all the time, but I do get them emailed to me, but if I'm not checking my phone, at least, you know, maybe the app will notify me over a voicemail, so, um, I see it quicker. I don't know, but I think it would be more filed and documented properly than just over a voicemail. I could say I listened to a voicemail, but I could go up and do ten other different things and totally forget about it. At least then it's documented, and then if anything ever comes about, we can go back and address it. Other than that, um, just doing our best as a Highway Department to stay together, um, work together, do it safely. We've had quite a few donations. Uh, we had that sander at the beginning of the year for the town. I'm very fortunate. The Paks and Fire Department also donated some of their, uh, chainsaws to the Highway Department. They mostly went electric, so I was confronted by them that they were just, um, you know, getting rid of some equipment, so that was able to benefit us a little bit due to, you know, we only have one chainsaw per truck, and we didn't have any backup, so that was really good. So big thank you to the Paks and Fire Department. Also, you know, just still looking for donations from, you know, other things that, you know, people may post for free, but, you know, especially other municipalities, if they find they don't need it anymore, and I feel it's going to benefit us, then, you know, I'm definitely going to look into it. Um, and also just looking into other equipment for the town. You know, we have a lot of old equipment that should be looked at and being replaced, and how we could replace it, and how, you know, money that we can save doing it, that's the biggest thing. Uh, we were able to save that twelve thousand five hundred dollars by trading in the old mower and the Case Military Loader for just the purchase of the mower head, so that was good. And that, well, I was able to pay out of my own budget, so we, that was, uh, good enough to save some, save the money, save the town some money. Other than that, uh, just last thing to note. I am, uh, obviously contracted, and I am obviously on a salary, um, but I do dedicate a lot of my time to the town. In town, that it has been over my normal eighty hours per pay period. Um, I do keep record of hours that I work past my normal eighty hours per pay period. And so far, since November, I've, uh, accumulated a hundred and eighty-eight and a half hours, um, of time that was, I could say unpaid, but dedicated to the town is what I'm getting at. Um, that hundred and eighty-eight hours can, um, you know, that was accumulated all throughout the winter, obviously, plowing, coming in at night, checking the roads, um, you know, if my guys weren't around and I needed to go do something, you know, I had to go out and do it. That's just what I wanted to do. Um, you know, if they were tied up doing something else, then I went and did it. That was weekends, after-work hours, whatever, but from, um, this past pay period to when I started was a hundred and eighty-eight and a half hours, so just so you guys are aware that, you know, even though that, uh, I'm contracted and everything, but I'm still dedicating as much time as I can to the town, be it a benefit. I think I covered basically everything. I want to be as short as possible.
Thank you. Uh, what are your summer hours right now?
Summer hours are six to four, um, Monday to Thursday with Fridays off, unless something happens on Friday, then we come in. Um, if I know something is going to come about, um, you know, say they predict a tornado on a Friday or something, then I will readjust the hours prior to the week, or prior to that day, to where I won't have to pay overtime. So then I can maybe go back for a few days to do that seven to three, at least then, so if something happens that Friday, then it'll be on normal town time versus paying overtime, um, which will benefit a little bit. Uh, but that's just if I can coordinate with storms and everything else. I really didn't think we were gonna get as much rain as they said we did, but there was some rivers flowing, so we had no choice.
When do your summer hours end?
Summer hours will end Columbus Day weekend. I just based my decision off of summer hours from the meeting that was back in April of two thousand and twenty-four. It was voted that summer hours were supposed to start, uh, first pay period in May and end Columbus Day weekend. Um, I just was basing it off of that. You know, in the future, we can definitely look into, uh, possibly changing it. Um, in my personal opinion, I do feel it's a little long. Maybe next year we will do something like Memorial Day to Labor Day or something like that. Or, you know, we'll figure something out together, but, um, I just was basing off of what was already voted on prior in the year.
Since you are kind of a part-time superintendent and worker also, I was just wondering what percent of your time you figure you use in the office, and what percent do you use out on the roads?
I would say, well, I mean, it depends on the day, um, you know, if I had to. Do bills for the warrant or payroll or something, I spend a little more time because I like to document and everything. Um, you know, or if I'm trying to, like, when I was trying to get the machine. Um, I spent a little more time in the office doing applications and contacting people, it's the first time I've really done. Most of the paperwork, so me trying to contact people with how to do things and everything does take more time. Um, I would say on an average day, maybe. Three to four hours in the office and then the rest on the road, I try to dedicate some time really driving around town, marking things, writing things down. Of what really needs to be looked at, uh, trying to coordinate with Harold, uh, he's been in town the longest. Um, for the highway department right now, so. Of what things that may have come up in the past that need to be addressed that has been overlooked. And that I wasn't aware of, like the Robinson Road Bridge, it was inspected, um, which will need to be inspected this year. Um, but just stuff like that, that's, I really wanna base my time as much as I can, being out and about, people seeing me. Um, especially if the guys are out in the middle of doing something, sometimes I have to run out of town, sometimes I run into Worcester. Or, um, other places to pick up parts or anything like that, just so we can save, you know, twenty to thirty dollars on shipping. Um, just so we can get it and then get the part, get it back, put it back together and get that out on the road.
Any thoughts, Pat, on dam safety, um, because that was quite an issue on Friday.
Yeah.
Last Friday.
Absolutely, I haven't gotten in touch with anybody, um, from dam safety. But I am, that is on my list of things to do, there is several dams in town that do need to be addressed, um. You know, uh, just to name a few, and, you know, there's nothing to hide, but, you know, Adams Pond, um, Farm Pond Road. Um, you know, there's a few out there that really needs to be addressed with that amount of water we had Friday. It really concerned me, especially with Adams Ponds, that if that lets go, it's. It's going to be an issue and it's gonna take out not just roads, but it could take out some houses. Um, Farm Pond Road, right now we're having an issue, it's starting to undermine, undermine the side of Crawford Road, which is a huge issue to me because that road was just paved. Um, you know, four or five years ago, so, um, I'm trying to get in contact with. Uh, the. Supposedly whoever owns the dam, so I'm trying to figure out, it's posted right now as private property, the town doesn't own it. Um, you know, right now it's kind of a finger pointing game of who owns it, so, I'm just.
The Crawford Road Dam?
Yeah, yeah, Crawford Road, Farm Pond Road, yeah.
The first house on the right owns it.
Yeah, that's what I've been trying to figure out, but I guess the house has been sold a few times.
It has.
Yeah, so I'm trying to catch up on who owns the house and how to get in contact with them, but. Yeah, and it may not be an issue, we could go in there and address the dam and break it, um, just enough to where we can get that water. Level down, where it won't cause an issue with the road, but dam safety definitely should be involved, um, but right now. Um, as an opposing problem, is just the side of Crawford Road and then the people's backyards who live on Farm Pond. Um, you know, they're all flooded, I mean, all the way to the last house that, um, is on that front stretch, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised on that one, we did a lot of work with that dam. First it was a jam, then it wasn't, then it was, then it wasn't, until that first second owner. Finally decided he wanted nothing to do with dams, so he made it so it wasn't a dam, it was more of a spillway.
Right, yes, okay.
And so you're still having problems.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the big thing too is beaver control, I'm. We're fighting beavers right now, left and right, I wish I could, I mean, it's, it's to the point where, uh. They're kind of getting aggressive. Me and, uh, Mike Granger had an interesting encounter when we were at Adams Pond and on Gaffney Road, um, they're. They are, um, the shorter terms, they're not afraid, they, they'll get pretty close, so. And when you know when they're splashing the water at you, I think you've gone a little too close, so. Uh, we're keeping an eye on it, I have talked to a beaver specialist who works with all the surrounding towns, um, he has given me some quotes. On doing some beaver removals, but at right now, I kind of wanna just keep everything flowing and see what happens, I'm hoping. That maybe we'll get a dry spell for a little bit and they'll find elsewhere to go, so.
Was it two years ago, we were taking the beavers out of Gaffney Road?
Yeah.
Or Bell Pond, or Bell Brook, actually. I don't know about the back of Adams Pond on Gaffney Road, I don't know how that's doing.
Yeah, Grace Lane, the, the, uh, the Beaver Dam on Adams Pond is actually next to, it looks like the old dock that. Where the boat was or whatever, but when you walk out on the dam, it's really right there, I mean, you're. Within ten, twelve feet of it when you walk on the dam, um, but that's, it's just an issue because there's only one overflow pipe on that dam. And it's only, I think, twelve, maybe fourteen inches big.
About.
And with the water level that it is right now, it's way too overwhelmed, it's, I mean, it's at its capacity probably for the last. Four or five days, I mean, it's at full capacity, um, and the pipe that goes under Adams Road, that's after the dam, that's a thirty-six inch. Cobra pipe, so, I mean, that can take the water, um, but the overflow pipe that's on the dam itself just is way too undersized. Um, and then there's the. Drop, catch basin, manhole inlet next to Grace Lane that takes some overflow too, that dumps out on the other side. Um, which, you know, we've been keeping clean, but we won't be able to address really anything until the water goes down, it's just way too much water right now.
And the aprons on the driveways?
Yes, I've been doing this, I, uh. Got the driveway permits, everything from when they started, there was a lot of them, I had to go through and. I had to figure out how the driveway permit numbers actually worked, but I was able to figure that out.
It was fun trying to figure that out.
Yeah, it was, it was a little difficult, but I got it, um, I put everything into an Excel spreadsheet, so it's just easier for me to. Be able to look at what's still outstanding and what isn't still outstanding, um, and it has been paid back. Um, I would say, uh, probably a little more than half of the town. Um, is still unpaved, I would say, I would say it's not a fifty fifty. Uh, but there is still quite a bit that's not paved, um, but there is.
There are about ninety-five that have not been paved.
Yeah.
That were supposed to have been paved.
Right, right.
There are others that haven't been paved, but they predated.
Right, exactly.
The rules.
Exactly, so, um, I just did a driveway permit the other day, another one on Hunt Road, um, but. You know, I've been looking at a lot of driveways as I can, I especially look at the ones where we may be repaving the road, so then we can address. Those driveways at the same time, um, obviously, they wouldn't be reimbursed, but at least then the aprons don't, so.
The board have any other questions? Comments? Observations?
Just say quick, good job on Forest Hill and. Farm Pond.
Oh, yeah, we were able to. Yeah, they're now chapter ninety accepted roads, so we are now receiving more funds, chapter ninety.
Good.
Was that, what was the, what was the mileage on that tube?
Yeah, so Forest Hill was, uh. I think it was point four of a mile, or it was, I think it was about a half a mile, including the cul-de-sac. Don't quote me on it, but I, I have the numbers, but Farm Pond was just over a half a mile, but they, they, them together, it was around. Two miles or just under two miles, so, right, as many miles as we can get and it's what, what can count.
I, I think you've done a great job, really, really impressed, um. You mentioned the, the app thing, we're gonna be upgrading the town website, we're in the process of that now.
Okay.
So there may be a connection with the upgrade.
Absolutely, yeah, and I'd be willing to help and do whatever needs to, you know, get things coordinated properly, absolutely, that's not a problem. I, uh, I appreciate the board's help with everything, so over the six months, and also Maridale for helping me with everything. Uh, it's been a learning curve, that's for sure, it's definitely. A little different than sitting in an excavator or a piece of machinery on the side of the road, so. Um, but I appreciate the help and, uh, look forward to continuing working with Ocam and doing what I can to help the town.
Good, good, good job, great, great job.
Thank you.
Very good presentation, very thorough.
Thank you, I tried to cover all my bases, I may have forgotten some stuff, but I'll, I'll put it in an email.
I'm sure that'll be fine. Okay, if there are no other questions? Comments, we'll move on.
Move on, yes.
Okay, next on our agenda, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Claire Hender for council on aging.
Yes, I just have a couple items, one actually has to do with the regional school agreement with Robin. Uh, I just wanted to confirm that you have not signed a renewal on the lease. For the Ocam Center School with the Robin Regional School District. I believe it comes up June this year, okay, so, if, if, uh, it does come up, if you would let me know. Uh, because one of the things I've been discussing is the possibility of lending in the leases with the regional school agreement. Um, I'm not so fond of that myself, I'd rather keep them separate. And I think as I had said before, we may never use it, but I would like to see if we can't negotiate an exit clause into the agreement. So that if it came a reason why we wanted the school, that we would have a mechanism put in place together. So that's the reason why. Okay, the second thing is at the last COA meeting, I announced that I was stepping down. So I will make that formal. In the meantime, Sue Adamski has agreed to take over the treasury responsibilities, so I'll be training Sue Adamski.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, we haven't found anybody for the acting chair, but. I'll be doing some poking around to get a, uh, person for the acting chair. So. And in the meantime, I'll still, uh, stay around to help Sue and also take care of the computer work until we can find somebody to take care of that. And in line with that, I did step, announced I was stepping down and I submitted an application with the finance committee. As a volunteer for the finance committee, I would have, uh, what happened to them? He didn't have a town email, so I did send it to Maribel and she said that she would get the word to him, you know, so I just wanted him to know. Cause he's the moderator.
There goes the words.
Claire, when does the, um. The regional. This subcommittee, when does that end?
Right now, there's not an end in sight, they wanted to have it ended by the annual town meeting. But I think they made the assumption that, uh, we would pretty much be rubber stamping it and then a number of questions came up. So the last meeting we had was in March. And, um, I think they felt pretty confident that the agreement would go as is, and you know, the agreements have to be approved by. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so it was submitted to them, they came back. With some of the objections that we indeed have been raising. And so we asked the attorney to please put together what the responses were from Desi. So that we won't be spinning our wheels and repeating things we don't have. So there was a big hiatus from the middle of March until tomorrow is our next meeting. And I got a, a preliminary write-up on the regional agreement, um. Two days ago, so, I would like to, you know, probably leave it tonight to finish the work that I'm working on. Put together the areas I think we need to discuss and then we'll be taken up again. So on May fourteenth, we meet, then again, we meet on May twenty-eighth, I've given up the idea that. We will have it for the annual town meeting, you will not. Yeah, maybe in the fall.
Um.
I'm thinking of.
You know where I'm going with that, right?
Pardon?
You know where I was going with that, right?
No.
With the finance. And being on the committee.
Oh. Oh.
You can only.
Yeah, well, it was the last time, I was on both.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot of that going around, but, it's a.
She does it as a representative of the finance committee? I could do that because I'm the only one raising objections, Mike. I'm just so.
All in with what.
I mean, people are still willing to sign off on things without questioning, you know? It's a concern, everybody wants to be agreeable. Which is laudable, but in some cases you have to raise questions.
But is that effective, does that have a financial?
But you're resigning from the COA.
Yes.
So you have no official authority with the COA.
No.
And just like anybody out here advising them.
Oh, I wasn't talking about that, I was talking about being on the.
On the school.
Regional.
On the regional plan.
Why don't you appoint me to the FinCom sometime in September?
Lease agreement.
Oh, the lease.
I guess that's kind of what I was.
Okay, okay.
That might be a good idea, Mike.
You know, you know what I'm.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, because of the way that.
Yeah.
Bylaws worded, you're, you know, your finance is supposed to be. Strictly financed. So you can look at everything critically.
Yeah.
Without, you know, being on another department, another this, another that. Um.
You know what I had interpreted that as, I could be a member of FinCom in this town, but no other town committee. Right.
Right.
I could not be on border health, I couldn't be a selectman, I could, but not. Like for regional agreements, yeah.
Well, I think, I think Lucy's point is probably very valid, that. Um, you could be the rep from the finance committee in the regional agreement discussions.
Probably be that too, I mean, I, there's ways I think that we can, you know. Work it out.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if there, if you feel that uncomfortable.
It's not that I'm uncomfortable, I just wanna. Make sure we don't.
There's no objections.
I don't lose you on the regional committee.
Okay.
Too soon.
Okay.
You have a partner though, don't you?
Yeah, he's only shown up for one meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, he missed the last meeting and he came up to me after the meeting, which I thought was very nice of him, he said, I couldn't have done what you did. During the meeting, and I think the reason was Lucy is I was on the last. So I had a leg up in that respect, I had experience where he didn't have experience.
Yeah, and he did state that he really did appreciate it, but that. If you were not able to attend a meeting, which I definitely appreciate his honesty and makes, it makes sense. He wouldn't know where to step in, well, you know, he understands the process, but he doesn't have the history.
Yeah.
To be able to just jump right in, which makes sense, um, but.
I think it's good exposure for him, so sometime in the future.
I appreciate him and his wife for, you know, showing interest in anything town related, for sure.
Right, right.
Well, my thought was if it wasn't too good God, who would it have been?
Yeah.
That's why I asked her. So.
So, you know.
And before you leave, Claire, if you could sign the warrant for your council.
Do we have a budget?
No, this is.
Oh, this is for paying?
This is for your.
I said, give me something to not sign it, well, that was stupid of me, wasn't it? There we go, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, Claire, in the last paragraph in the. In the bylaws, it does. Um, it references all financial matters before the town, which would be. I think would fall into that category like Lucy is thinking.
I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah.
It, uh. Yeah, we give you the, uh, a full comprehensive view of what is happening with.
Right.
With the school and with the towns, and I guess especially when you're talking about the lease, because I really wanna. You know, give us as many options as we, as we can get.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense seeing we're paying the bills.
Yeah.
You know, the upkeep.
Yeah. Where do you think that leaves us? I mean, I haven't heard back from FinCom.
I think you did get an email today, you probably haven't seen it, it came in a little while ago.
Yeah, I did, but okay, yeah, okay, so I'll re- mail you. Haven't been sworn in yet, has she? You haven't been sworn in yet?
No, no, it was more of a, a, of their next scheduled meeting.
Oh, okay.
To, you know, attend and to pencil it in and.
Okay.
That step.
They have a meeting scheduled yet?
I think it will be the twenty-first, which is next Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
At six thirty possibly, I believe.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But in the meantime, I want to, can you from council?
Sure.
Just to make it clear.
Okay. And then a push comes to shove, I just don't join until after the regional agreement.
Right.
Oh, and that'll be the slow time after the town meeting.
Yeah.
Going forward, so.
Right, that's right. So I'm not losing anything.
Right.
And it doesn't mean I can't go to the meetings and just listen in, you know, so that, you know, you're up to speed and stuff.
True. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Claire.
Okay, continuing on fiscal year 2026 budget possible vote. Maribel, you had something to say as a member of the school committee?
Yeah, I attended the Quavon Regional School Committee Sub-Budget Committee last Thursday, which the subcommittee voted to present to the full school committee a reduction in assessment. Quavon reduced their assessment, which then reduced OKM's portion of the assessment from an overall increase of 4.31% from last year to now only a 1.97 increase. The second proposal, see, was 260,803, oh, 260, yeah, 260,000, sorry, now down to our portion is 2,728.3947 cents, so a reduction of 62,749.83.
749?
Yes, 62,749.83 is the reduction for OKMs. We were the second lowest in increase from the five towns.
Who's the lowest?
Hardwick with a point nine five.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So that's, might not solve all the towns' financial restraints, but it certainly helps.
Yes.
And every penny does. And Quavon has been, you know, trying to, they really went through the budget closely, made some reductions. I mean, things as simple as $800 from here, you know, to larger amounts, you know, 15,000 from somewhere else. Kind of really trying to narrow in and do the best they can.
They did have some retirements too that they weren't going to.
They weren't going to fill, so certain positions didn't get backfilled. So, yeah. Not only by trying to maintain what they want to do, but also trying to do the best by all five towns as best as they can. So it was appreciated for sure.
I appreciate that. Still leaves us 90,000 over the one half cap. So we've got to cut. We've already kind of decided on 37,000 of it.
Right.
And the town accountant has another 52. That's what we need to discuss, the 52.
In cuts?
Either that or you're doing an override.
Right. Now, when she redid her figures, she put the colas back in, right?
In stipends. I can share that.
And how many cuts were that 37,000? Did we make 10?
Somewhere around there.
That was for the original.
The original.
The original, yeah. And those are still holding?
We didn't say not to. We didn't say not to.
Right.
So.
Are we going to notify the people that are on that list?
When we make a decision.
I know, we can, you know.
We keep putting it off.
Well, they keep saying, when are we going to find out?
Some money is coming in, but.
I say we have.
Just keep in mind that the blue highlighted items are items that the accountant has her recommendations, whether reduced or.
The reductions.
Yep. So, hold on, let me make this a little smaller to try to get it all in there.
We were at 103 short as of the last meeting and change. And then with the 62 reduction in the school, that's a little less than 50.
In the email.
He's got 52,000.
Okay. Remaining that we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come to even on.
Well, we have to do something or need the override.
Yeah.
Did you see the email from the accountant where these numbers were in regards to that she's worked, reworked the fiscal 26 draft expenditures with the new school amounts, the new revenue numbers from the Senate was still short 51,374 or over the levy limit. She's revised her version of her suggestions of the budget. This now includes the new school amount. She put back all the stipends and colas except for the treasurer, which she recommends moving forward that per hour rate might be looked at to be lowered for next employee. But all other expenditure cuts remain as she had originally proposed. The new budget puts us about 350 under the levy limit. I made the expenditure cuts based on data, what departments use and don't use. I cut from everyone, not just one department. The biggest cuts were from the accountant and treasurer. Again, because both had software cuts, costs that they no longer need. The other departments were based on usage. If the town votes to go ahead with the proposed, her budget that she's proposing, they can make it work one more year without an override. But very close.
Now, so the the line items in blue, she didn't change any of those between the last time we went over it.
Except for putting back the colas. So yes, those.
Well, those, right.
But the remaining ones, correct.
But there were no changes to the figures in the blue. Or further cuts.
Sure.
On any.
Yeah, not that I. Yep, and this also includes the original 37.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, might be to scroll through on more.
Well, if there were no changes, then from the last time she drew that up.
Mm-hmm, right.
And this has all been sent to FinCom as well?
Um, I believe her email had FinCom on it.
Have they had any comments on it or anything?
Yes, it was sent to it was sent to the Chair of FinCom.
Okay.
But he hasn't responded, huh?
I, I, I mean, he could have responded just to her for all, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, here's a question, Don. If you give 300 something dollars to the good, if you do this. But where does it set you up for next year?
It doesn't.
Well, open that, some of that free cash.
Well, then we're still more on that free cash merry-go-round. But this is instead of putting any of it away for a rainy day.
This is what two accountants have told us repeatedly over the past few years is that no matter how we slice the pie, we're still $100,000 shy and we've been using free cash to fill that. So we're not going to have those numbers going into next year.
Right.
Well, I'm wondering with $100,000 override, if we suggest that, that's going to spread a lot smaller across the board than bigger in for next year. If we don't do anything this year.
We're not going to know that because we're not going to know what our new growth for next year is.
No, but we can assume some of it, that you're going to be in the same boat.
What do you think? And I'll put you on the spot.
There's a few new balances going up, so I'm estimating we'll hit our target. I'm not sure. From what I've seen this year, there have to be some developers come our way in order to hit something bigger than where we're at. I mean, we did get about $20,000 more in money from the state this year on the the DCR land, which was a good thing. They kind of promised us last year they would look at that. I think that was like an hand go be rural communities thing and.
Now, did Lori add that into this? Yeah.
We've kind of gone over a lot of the numbers.
Yeah.
So we're like, looked at everything. So.
Okay.
We've got scraped by.
That's real kind of the decision would be you try to pick up a little bit of gain right now for next year going forward. Doesn't have to be 100. You could be 50. You could be.
If I may, just something for the board to just keep in mind, the annual town meeting is scheduled for June 24th. Pushing it initial, the initial reason to kind of feel out the school, right? With that being said, an override needs to be voted at a annual town meeting and then it needs to go to a ballot before July 1st in order to hope it's effective. If not, if it's after July 1st, you go in with your old budget until it passes, if it passes. So for it to be done prior to all of it come together prior to July 1st and the town clerk and all the I, the annual town meeting would then now be, I would say, would need to be moved early on, which now leaves a smaller window for all those pieces to come together. Just something for you guys to keep in mind as well when making this decision.
You're also going to need public education on the.
Agreed.
And why we need an override and what it's going to cost. And that's taking a lot of time.
I think to educate people.
Then we have a cost.
It's setting it up for more of a possible success than rushing through it.
Yeah.
People, I mean, I know I wouldn't want to vote on something that I'm not really sure about. So those are valid points.
With this budget, we're, we're in the black.
Yeah.
Um, with all the cuts, pretty much across the board. Yeah. So we can vote to go with that. I, I get all the the logistics of doing a different vote, you know, with the, having a ballot vote and everything else. I'm just throwing it out there that for last minute consideration. I'm not recommending it or because we can do it again next year, but we'll have to be ahead of the game next year.
Yes.
And we obviously, we don't know if our student enrollment will be lower or higher or what our assessments would be between Pat Fire and Quavon until last minute.
My personal feeling is if we can balance the budget right now, let's do it. It gives us 10 months.
Yeah.
Really work on a plan, a financial plan going forward because it doesn't, year to year stuff is going to stop. We need to look further out, you know? I'm comfortable doing this this year. And start working on a plan.
Well, I'm, I'm more comfortable that we're now able to do the cost of living for, you know, our hourly employees.
Yeah.
So that was a big worry on my part.
Or we lose everybody else.
I want the roads plowed. Those people do have options.
Oh, yeah.
The accountant is looking for a way to move forward next year too, so we wouldn't be in such a tight spot. Some kind of a management.
Yeah, well, yeah, she had proposed a financial management plans and policies. That way every order selectman, the accountant, finance committee know their roles, when to start and kind of implement it. Yeah, so it'd be a smoother.
It'll start coming together a little more.
Yeah.
But we're never going to have an overrun mount.
The original cuts were eight. Eight cuts.
Even if we vote this, I'm still going to have to wait for the finance committee review and recommendation for the voter advisory.
Yeah.
So there would possibly have to be a second vote in case they disagree with something.
They recommend something different. We got to take another vote, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But you want to vote on what you want to show them that we've come up with.
Yeah, yeah. You, oh, I'm you're in agreement that we want to do that tonight.
And if you do, we need a motion.
Want to make a motion? Do we adopt the budget presented by the accountant in FY '26?
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda, employee disclosure forms for a vote. I do not have any disclosure form. Would you like to read them?
Sure. It has title, opposition, Christine Maderozan, municipal agency, town clerk's office and town hall address. And town clerk, my duties require me to participate in a particular matter and I may not participate because of a financial interest that I am disclosing here. I request a determination from my appointing authority about how I should proceed. And the particular matter is employing my son's fiance, Marissa Salvery. Did I say that correctly?
I think so.
To work the election polls on election day. The hourly rate set for this is a minimum wage of $15 per hour. And it says, please describe the task you are, they would be required to perform, and that would be supervision of election duties. And financial interest in this particular matter would be my immediate family member has a financial interest in the matter. Which I believe would just be by relation. And that would be says explain financial interest and include a dollar amount. It's $15 per hour.
15.
At the hours worked on election day, employee signature, Christine Maderozan. And appointing authority, town OKM, title position, Lucy Testnow, board of selectmen. And determination by appointing authorities. As appointing official as required by general laws, chapter 268 A. I guess that's section 19. I have reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified above by a municipal employee. I have determined that the financial. I have determined that the financial interest is not. So substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee. And. Guess I'll. Make that a motion unless anybody has any objections. Lucy, there's a signature spot on the second page.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um. Annual town meeting date change. Possible vote if we decide to do that. We're not going to need to. If we're not going to go to an override, we don't need to make it earlier.
Right. No.
We could, but we don't have to.
No.
Funny thing. Where it is.
Funny thing is Barry and Oakham are. So this is funny for the school committee. Well, not really, but. They're double booked on the same night and New Braintree and Hardway are on the same night, so they need to definitely divide and conquer.
Yeah.
Well, we got our, we got one of our school committee members that'll be there.
Yeah.
Someone will be there, either Colleen, Mewhow, or Stacy, Skerritt, some, I mean, there'll be people from.
Well, I meant you were.
I know.
School committee's got a lot of power.
Oh, yeah.
They forget sometimes.
So we'll not change the date. We'll keep it as is, okay?
Yeah.
Annual town meeting warrant articles requests received. We had. Reopened the warrant. For articles to be presented to us. They had until noon time yesterday. If they had any additional articles to be placed on and.
I believe.
How many did we receive?
These were the only two from the accountant which you guys had already voted on at the last meeting. Nothing additional came through.
Nothing from any of the departments?
No.
No, and we had. Emails from the police department chief and the fire chief saying they had.
They were all good.
They were good. They had.
They were all set.
Nothing they wanted to have.
Did I see someone's hand go up before? No, I thought I saw a hand. Okay. After a while, you begin to wonder. Okay, Jerry, good. And so it's just the ones that we've already seen from the town accountant. So we're all. We already agreed to those, did we not?
Right.
Yes.
Dawn, did you want to, Lucy, did you want to reaffirm the vote? For the annual town meeting with a motion and a vote, or are we good?
I think we're good.
We should be.
We didn't change it.
Yeah, we should be all. Any new business for the board?
Nope.
No. Old business.
Are you opening up for old business?
We're just opening up now to old business. Yes.
Lucy DeLeo, three twenty five, he still wrote. The old business was that I had asked, I think it was the twenty fourth. Um, for you to vote on this battery energy storage facility. Um, your opinion would be, I asked. We have a vote of the select board saying yes, they want it, or no, they don't want it. But instead of a vote, uh, you voted on sending a letter. That, that wasn't anything that I had asked for, but I'm. Willing to accept that instead of bringing it up again for a vote. And from last night's meeting, from Westfield's. Um. Presentation, they had the resolution.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I was given a copy of the resolution. There's. I adopted it. As a format. For the letter. That you intend to send. It hasn't been done yet.
Mm hmm.
It, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. I, I've checked everything on that, and it's accurate in terms of what statutes they cited or what laws they cited. As to our rights as citizens.
Mm hmm.
But there are areas in there that I took out Westfield and inserted Oakham. Described the place for the, uh, the site. I don't know how many residents there are of Butters. I didn't know that. I'm not privy to that information. Unless I go look at the tax.
Can give it to you.
It was a lot.
I just put how many.
I don't know the number, but I can give it to you cuz I just put the list together to monitor the property values. Okay, thank you, but I only need the number. I don't need the actual addresses.
No, I'll give you.
And that could be inserted, but the water, um, I think as they highlighted last night. Is a significant issue, which I think will catch everyone's attention, including those that live in the Boston area.
Right.
And that's, I think, a very strong point. I don't know how the water runs. But we do have Tom Hughes as part of our.
Ware, Ware River. And fill, yeah.
Right. It has to be more. We need more information that's gonna. Really send home the message that it's just not this one part. It, it could come your way. If there is an accident. And, and it's permanent.
I think so.
There's, um. An engineer, water. Uh, was it a water engineer?
Water engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A waterway engineer that we might be able to. Get information.
Water wetlands.
Both.
Um, to in, to incorporate into that resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Cuz, um. He also made the distinction last night too that some of our water ends up running towards Chicopee because we have. Two aqueducts. One goes that way to Chicopee Springfield, and the other goes to Wachusett and Boston. So we're, we're a divided town as far as that's concerned. The one heading out towards Chicopee begins on Crocker and I Road. And the water flows in a different direction.
Well, also down at Colebrook, that water drains under Rutland Road. Into Dean Pond. Five Mile River, Brooks Pond, Lake Lash Way into the Quabog River, which goes into the Chicopee.
All that needs to be explained.
Mm hmm.
Um, clearly. Uh, maybe a map as an attachment to it.
I mean, the other, the others, the north side of it isn't. I don't know if you. Consider it an aquifer as much as an aqueduct underground. That is, that is the main. Tunnel. From the Quavon reservoir runs underneath the north end of Oakham.
Right.
And that takes water. From the Quavon reservoir to Wachusett. But it also takes water from the Ware River off of one twenty two at the intake station. And that water can go either way. Either to the Quavon, depending on what.
That was explained to me earlier, but.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but. The point is, is that we need somebody that can clearly state. It can go this way, it can go that way, and maybe even contamination from runoff from this facility. I don't know if there is any kind of runoff that comes as a byproduct of operating these batteries. I don't know.
It would be in a fire.
But that, well, that's the big accident.
That's.
And that.
It's from the part that goes up in the air, comes back down. That goes into the land. And into the water and could work its way down.
Right, but this is all contingent upon a fire happening. And the whole premise is that something's gonna happen and you're doomed.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's too.
True.
So don't even put it there. Don't even think about it.
Right.
So. Um, if we could get. That incorporated into a resolution. That's what I would. Ask you to send. To.
Okay.
Everyone. Well, you can decide where you want to send it. But there's no vote required or anything. That was just. You know, I took it, I typed it. It's in a, not a PDF form, so if it needs to be done.
Mm hmm.
Airbelton's.
Oh, okay.
Just take it, yeah.
Oh, good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. It's so.
Very nice. Thank you.
According to DCR, that site is a water divide. Meaning water drains both ways.
Right. When I had checked into it in the mid nineties. On the board. Um, that's when Amherstato was, was running. And. It had more to do with, um. Hey, what are you gonna do with this? Do you ever come over here and inspect, you know? There's gasoline going on the ground. There's oil going on the ground, all these things. And the answer I got from them at the time was. The water right in there goes the other way. We don't care. That was nineteen ninety five. No, it does, but the topography in there. Most of the water around the junkyard site. Goes this way. And there is a brook at the bottom, but.
Top too.
Yeah.
It's actually a pond, isn't it?
On, on the far side.
Yeah, there's one that cuts left above the. The junkyard.
Yeah.
If you're standing up. Yeah, but that one goes.
Comes back around.
And there's one up higher that runs under the old cart road. That angles off turn, towards Turnpike Road and goes under Turnpike down closer to one twenty two. So, and that feeds into muddy pond, Parker Brook. Oh.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I did hear from DEP. I think, um, last Thursday or Friday. And they confirmed that no one has ever reported any gasoline, oil. Antifreeze ever being released onto the ground. Which many people have said. Routinely happened. And so because nobody ever reported it. There's absolutely nothing that they can do. Um. To impose any restrictions. Unless there's a report of said.
Oh.
Release.
There isn't. The only thing I ever heard was somewhere in between the businesses from when it was the old junkyard to the business when they bought it. Um, that two tests were done for the EPA. And they said that they were clean. I don't know how that could have happened, but that's. The word I, I heard.
I can forward that. They, they only did a few, um, sites. Um, not the forty acres of, uh, vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It was only round. Probably closer to the road.
The garage.
Yeah.
They said it was at the garage.
Yeah. Cuz I couldn't imagine that they showed up. Negative. I knew they had to, yeah, but, but that was the word that we had gotten, and we just had to let it go at that.
We got nothing else.
Have to see what we can do with that.
And I must say, if I may, it was a nice turnout. I, I appreciated the board putting that one solo item and doing two meetings in a row. Just to kind of focus on.
Right.
Last night, as it is a hot topic for the town and seeing everyone come together. It's.
It was, it was nice of another town to come forward saying that they wanted to support us. Yes, do what they.
There was some people from Rutland, uh, there was a, a planning board member from Barry. There were, uh, I believe some one or two folks from North Brookfield, not really sure what their roles, if it was just residents. Or, you know. Uh, town employees, either way. You know, the more, the better.
Yeah.
So the minute you gotta wait for that meeting, it's gonna be really long.
Watch the Zoom, which will be up tomorrow.
Well, I, I thought it went very well. Everybody had something, you know, interesting to say. It went very calmly. Nobody was yelling, screaming, saying this is what we got, you know, it was. Very nicely handled.
Very well.
So I was very happy with it. Okay, under new business, old business, I'm sorry, road acceptance update, which I don't think there is one that I have heard of. Did we? No.
No, we haven't heard anything. And I haven't heard anything from. Phil hasn't heard anything.
No, and nothing from town council on any update?
No phone calls, right, in the last week. Okay.
Yes. On the acceptance of. That development.
Mm hmm.
I don't know how much money the town has spent. With lawyer's fees. Waiting and, and it's been going on for three years without any progress. Why can't we just throw the responsibility on the residents? Get their act together. Whoever Spalain and Spalain represents, I don't know who he does, what they do. But. If, if. Come around the circle of plowing. Um, if they have to pay for their own plowing. Because they haven't been accepted and they're private road. I think that's the only, you know, teeth that's gonna get these people moving.
I think you're probably right.
Yeah, unless you hit a pocketbook, you're gonna get all this bologna, and I'm not happy. As Dawn knows about plowing this thing, but. I don't think it's our responsibility, and I know there are other private roads that have them plowed. Virtuously. Um, but I think a strong letter, if we're gonna spend any more money on it. From town council. Uh, or to town council, that they just send them essentially. Make a decision. We're done dealing with this. We're not wasting any more money on it, and this is the consequence. So get your act together. We're done.
I agree.
Thank you.
I think the people themselves, I think, really think that everything is done. On paper, it's just sitting in some lawyer's office, and he's not forwarding it to the town.
I don't think. Because he's gonna get paid.
Some don't even know.
And I don't know whose lawyer is holding it up. I don't know whether it's Mr. Amadeo's lawyer that's holding it.
No, they're done.
Or if it's Mr. Colmo's lawyer that's holding it.
Amadeo's lawyer is done with everything. You reconstituted this corporation.
Yeah.
Signed the paperwork and whatever rights the corporation had in the roads. And. It's. The one represented by Spalain and Spalain that bought up some of the stuff in. The chapter seven. And so they own the. The other. Parts of those roads. Yeah, um. Yeah, so theoretically, the town is standing at the edge of Turnpike Road looking in if we want to. Um. My only concern is you have twenty houses down there and. You know, they're paying for fire, police, and. Not the roads. But. We'd have to have assistance for those services to be responsible. Because they are paying taxes.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where the conundrum is. To try to move this thing along.
Then give them the plowing bill.
That's a nice gesture, but. Good luck getting paid.
Add it on to their tax bill.
So there was a, um. How many years has the town on plowing is the question because.
Just a year.
Boylston had a very costly. Issue. When that, there's several of them over in West Boylston and Cobbleman and Page was the representative and said. After so many years, it's like eminent domain. You've been doing it.
Totally.
They can sue the town now because you're taking away what you've been doing.
Winter.
So we only did it one year. Twenty four, twenty five.
Voted January.
Just one year.
One year.
Maybe, yeah, it was January twenty four. And I, and we voted one year.
Yep.
January twenty four.
Yes.
So I think we're safe.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, it hasn't been.
Well, we do, we do have an opinion from town council that we don't have to do anything.
No. No.
If we don't want to.
There you go. Don't have to spend any more money on it.
Or at the least, this will, could get the residents to then contact. Um. The developer or them, you know, kind of. I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they could form their own association and have a collection and for plowing.
True. True.
Yeah.
So next meeting, we should put it on the agenda to vote not to do it anymore.
Yep.
Better to do it in good weather than when it's bad.
Yes, I, I agree. I agree.
Nobody will notice.
They might notice the first storm.
Then maybe something will come along.
There's other issues too. There's school buses. There's, I mean. I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think when this started up a couple of years ago, it didn't. Get handled the way it. Should have. It should have been. Get your paperwork together and come to the selectmen, hand it to them. And then they'll hand it to the planning board for their forty five day, day review. You guys own it. The reason the roads are last is so when all the houses are sold and the road. The reason the roads are last is so when all the houses are sold and the rope, the roads are, have their final pavement and their meets and bounds are in, is so that the contractor there's, there's an entity to sign over the roads in a legal document to the town. So that's really kind of, that's where it's at. Other than getting getting all that paperwork.
Got the approval to put in this subdivision? Because many developers were supposed to file bonds for roads.
Well, what screwed it all up, I guess, is the bankruptcy.
Yeah.
Um, the, the planning board has a very long paper chain of the fits and starts with the whole thing, going back into the late nineteen nineties. You know, starting as a gravel pit. Taking the contractor through multiple meetings because they didn't have permit, they didn't want to get a permit. So they had to settle that issue. And then move forward from there with the subdivision plan and so it was quite long and drawn out. But I mean, it appears all had been done right except for you know, the bankruptcy thing just kind of really messed up turning it over.
So the next, uh, selectmen's meeting is Tuesday, five, uh, May twenty-seventh because Memorial Day, just an FYI.
May twenty-seventh. I don't need to write that, do I? Mo, is that Lucy?
Nothing.
She'll, she'll be here, just in a different seat.
True.
That's right.
I'll be back there.
Easily.
Yes. With that being said.
So no meeting next week?
Yeah.
No meeting next week.
The election is next week. This beat is a little bittersweet.
If the, um, finance beats next week? If they post a meeting?
I believe it'll be the twenty-first. Though.
It'd be Wednesday.
Or we will usually send maybe the agenda to post.
Okay. With a question mark.
Six thirty.
Income six thirty?
Yes, Wednesday the twenty-first as of right now.
I will be at that one.
Okay.
Maybe not officially, but I will be.
Town resident, just as important.
Okay, no correspondence to take care of? We have this to look at, take care of? Okay. Are we ready for executive session?
Yeah, I guess.
Gee, thanks. It'll be quick.
Are we adjourning from executive session? Or in executive?
I haven't said yet. Are we gonna come back to?
Yes, before the meeting goes into executive session, we'd like to take a, a quick sec to you know, like I said, it's a bittersweet meeting, it's your last official regular selectmen's meeting. So I personally thank you so much for, when I started here, the coaching and helping and always being my to-go person.
And now you're my to-go person.
Yeah, uh, I always called her the human dictionary because she knew everyone or knew how to get a hold of who I needed, so a lot of words, can't rally them all up right now, but thank you very much for everything.
Oh, you're more than welcome, it was a lot of fun. It doesn't seem like six years. We start, I started with COVID and worked my way through to here.
Yeah. And not only as a selectman, just thank you seriously for all your years of dedication, starting with council on agent many years ago to all the boards and committees you're on.
Secretary to the Board of Selectmen. It's making its little circle, it's like a full circle.
It is.
Yeah.
Michael now.
I will say thank you for taking the minutes thirty-five years ago.
How many years ago?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Been nineties.
Wow.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
And the council on agents, what, how, the senior center?
Thirty-one.
Geez.
Yes. Cemetery, but conservation.
When you, when you like the town, you like the people you're with all the time, you'll do whatever it takes.
We need more of that.
You know? But again, it's, it's just been a lot of fun living in Oakham. I, I just enjoy the town so much, we always have, I mean, I, I moved in the year after I got married and that was it. We haven't moved since, I've been here that whole length of time. And I
You're a townie, Lucy.
I, I guess I am, I guess I am, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, executive session coming up.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
To conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel board, selectmen administrative.
Want to. Okay, so we don't do what we did last. I'll make a motion that we go into executive session and that we will come out of executive session to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Apikowski, aye.
Testnow, aye.
Brunel, aye.
Okay, one moment, please. We are reopening the public meeting at eight forty-one PM.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight forty-one.